Good evening and welcome to the Greenwich RTM meeting on Monday, October 25, 2004. I'm Frank Quinn, and tonight I'm joined by Ms. Nancy Brown, who is the Director of the Community Development Block Program. Nancy, thank you very much for being here with us tonight. Tonight, Items 1 and 2 on the RTM's call are about the grant program. Could you give us some background on what this program is about?
Well, the block grant program is a return of tax revenue, federal tax revenue, back to communities across the country for those communities to address their needs as they see them, so long as the primary beneficiaries of those programs that the funds are expended on offer the benefit of low and moderate income people.
Okay. Now, when this money comes into the town of Greenwich, what's the process by which we apply to the federal government for it?
Well, tonight is the final approval process for the grant for 2005, and it started, basically, last February with advisory committee reviewing the performance for 2003, and then in April, we did requests for proposals to the community, to community organizations, inviting them to apply for the funds, so that those nonprofit agencies that are doing programs for low and moderate income people will then apply to do that thing which they think is appropriate for the income group.
And you say that there's an advisory program that's in place. Is that a committee that's appointed by the selectmen?
No, no. The committee is made up of a representative from each of the RTM districts, plus there are two members from the Board of Estim and Taxation, one from Planet and Zone, and then we have special interest groups represented, like the NAACP and the National Organization of Women and Hispanic Organization, so that we get a broad spectrum of the community on the committee. The first selectman, the only thing he does is appoint the chairman of the committee.
And there's obviously a process for applying for these funds here within the town of Greenwich. Tell us how that process takes place.
Well, we send requests for proposals out to various organizations that we know that provide services to low and moderate income people, to homeless people, and we invite them to submit a proposal, and then the committee, I will review them to see if they're eligible, and then the committee will ask the organization's representatives to come in. They will then go out to the agencies and look at the project, talk to the agency representatives, and then they come back and deliberate. By this time, we're in June. They will then come back and deliberate on those proposals and decide how to best divide the monies. They have already set their agenda, which is usually to provide the funds or to give a priority to those activities that address the most vulnerable people in the community, like the elderly and children, and then in addition to providing for basic human needs.
I see. Now, that's got to be a challenging process to go through. I'm sure it's tough to have to find, obviously, it's a great thing to find those who you can fund, and do you meet up with those that you can't fund?
It's not difficult to find those that we can fund. What is difficult is to decide in how to split up the funds among the various competing needs. That's very difficult, but I think that the advisory committee does an excellent job on that.
Terrific. So you receive that support that you need.
Oh, absolutely. We couldn't do it without their input.
Terrific. Well, Nancy, thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate it. This is always a regular process here every year with the RTM, and thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're about to get started here. Tom Byrne, the moderator of the RTM, will begin the meeting momentarily.
Welcome to the October meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our September 20 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any changes, amendments, or corrections to those minutes? Mr. Clark, District 7. Mr. Clark, is there a green light on the microphone in front of you? Is it on?
Ah, now, the light was green, but it's now greener.[347.41][347.41](Laughter). Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There are a number of small comma flaws, which I'd like to point out, because I think in the interest of archival accuracy, it's nice to have a clean copy of these minutes. Starting at paragraph 5, in the fourth line down, "The students are," comma, "all seniors." I think the comma needs to be omitted. And then, after Brunswick School, probably a colon, and then the names, Sophia, Julia, et cetera. Then, a few lines later, the clerks were in, four new members, again, probably a colon rather than the comma. And the next paragraph down, Colleen Jenkins, Chairman of the Appointments Committee, and there should be a comma, but isn't. And most importantly, on the following page, at the bottom of the second paragraph, the following items were placed on the consent calendar. It says 1 to 7 plus 8. It should be 1, comma, 7, plus 8, I think.
Right, and that's what it says right below, 1, 7, and 8. You are correct on that.
Thank you.
Shall we adopt that by unanimous consent?
Yes.
Okay. Absent objection, those changes will be made upon unanimous consent. Any other corrections to the September minutes? Hearing none and absent objection. The minutes as amended stand adopted.
Mr. Moderator, Members of Town Meeting. In the 70 years that Greenwich has been governed by a representative town meeting, thousands of our residents have come forward and volunteered their time and their talents to serve in this body. Some have come for only a term or two, others have stayed on for years and years and who have actually served decades. These men and women are the institutional memory of this body. They are, in fact, the pillars of this body, and they have contributed a vital significance to the town of Greenwich. In 1964, a young lawyer with Hirschberg, Pettengill, and Strong named Harry E. Peden, Jr., came to Greenwich. Very quickly, Harry became a familiar face in town, in the town hall and in the Y, where he was known to enjoy swimming and running before the rest of us came to work in the When the Pedens moved here, the first thing Harry did was to join the RTM. 1964, he came into this body and became a part of the Legislative Committee, and he served District 8 for four years. In 1968, he left Coscobb and came to my part of town, Northwest Greenwich, where he continues to live until today. When the Pedens moved to Northwest Greenwich, there wasn't a vacancy in our district, but soon after one became available, and in 1972, he returned to Town Meeting and again to the Legislative Committee, where he served until he resigned in September of this year. In addition to everything that Harry did in the RTM over the years that he was here, he was a very important member of the Northwest Greenwich Board of Directors at a time when our four-acre zone was under attack by Xerox Corporation. He became a very integral member of the Round Hill Fire Department and served as its chief and as its president, rather, and is its president today. There are any number of people in organizations throughout the town who are well acquainted and well-familiar with the name Harry E. Peden, because over the years, he gave so much and is giving so much to the town. But we here in Town Meeting tonight recognize him for what he did in this body. District 10 would like to offer a resolution and ask that you join with them in approving this and thanking Harry E. Peden. Whereas Harry E. Peden, Jr. came to Greenwich in 1964, quickly became a member of the Representative Town Meeting from District 8 and served on both the Legislative and the Rules Committee; and whereas Harry Peden continued to serve in the RTM until 1968, when he moved from Coscobb to Northwest Greenwich; whereas Harry E. Peden, Jr. returned to the Representative Town Meeting in 1972 as a delegate from Northwest Greenwich and has represented that district continuously since; whereas Harry Peden, Jr. has served since 1972 on the Legislative and the Rules Committee of the RTM, and many of those years as its chairman or its vice-chairman of the Legislative Committee; and whereas Harry E. Peden, Jr. on September 21, 2004, elected to resign from the Representative Town Meeting citing long years of service and a desire to spend more time with his family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that it is the sense of this meeting that the appreciation of the Representative Town Meeting be extended to Harry E. Peden, Jr. for his 36 years of service to the Town Meeting, to his district, and to his town.
Whoops. The minutes can reflect that resolution was adopted unanimously by a hearty round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Caldwell, and thank you, Mr. Peden, for your service. Now, last month, I tried to drum up support for our social event, and you know how successful I was. So, not being modest, I thought we might use a new spokesman to drum up support, perhaps a little more photogenic. So I call on Claire Simonelli of District 12, who has graciously agreed to organize our Harvest Buffet.
Thank you, Tom. To those of you who haven't met me, I am a new member of District 12. I have a background in public finance banking, and I'm an alternate on the Finance and Budget Committees. I casually asked Tom last May whether this group ever got together socially, because I realized I didn't know anyone outside of District 12, and it's very hard for us to speak during the meeting. So Tom mentioned that there was a picnic in 1997, which was a long time ago. So I volunteered to organize this buffet, which we're holding on November 17, three weeks from this Wednesday, from 6:30 to 9:00 at the Old Greenwich Civic Center. We've hired Garden Catering of Old Greenwich, who I understand do a fabulous job with buffet dinners, so they're catering the event, and we'd love to hear from all of you, whether you can come or not. Checks made payable to me, and Carol is sitting at the door, collecting the checks, my treasurer. Mary Waldron is a part of the Event Planning Committee, as is Tom. We could use three or four more volunteers to help on the day of, to carry refreshments and help us set up. So, any questions? The whole purpose of it is for us to get to know each other, and I think about a third of the group has turned over in the last two years.
Great.
Excuse me. Former RTM members, guests, spouses, significant others are also welcome, and we will be having music, so there will be dancing. Thank you.
Wonderful. If you could please let us know before leaving tonight. Carol Ducray is currently outside the auditorium and is a member of District 6, but it would be very helpful to know tonight what our count is. Thank you. Thank you, Claire. I might also mention, once again, thank you to Paul Curtis of District 9, who has single-handedly been responsible for getting us on the air and comes early each night of our meeting and obviously has to stay late to pack up, and I neglected to thank him last time. I want to thank Paul for all his hard work. So if we could...[907.01][907.01](Applause). Paul is also very responsive. Members of my family have asked for less camera time on me, and you see this camera up front, and it's pointing out at you. So just be forewarned, the fact that it's pointing at District 1 is just because they're in the middle.[931.76][931.76](Laughter). All right, that brings us to the call for tonight's meeting, and it is at this time of the meeting that the moderator suggests a motion to suspend the rules to combine items for voting purposes. Let me just say, I did notify all the district and committee chairs over the weekend that I did not intend to designate any items for our consent calendar, primarily because our agenda is relatively short, and at least two of the items that would have been candidates for the consent calendar require a public hearing, and the consent calendar would obviously negate that possibility. So, no consent calendar tonight. And based on the reports of our districts, it was the consensus to combine Items 1, 2, and 6. And for 6, that item will have three substitutes presented in place of what is on our call as Item Number 6. So I will designate those when they come forward as 6A, B, and C, but all of our committees that considered this, and certainly our districts had copies, I know our districts had copies of these three substitutes. So I will suggest that Items 1, 2, and 6A, B, and C be combined for voting purposes. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and combine Items 1 and 2 and what will be offered as 6A, B, and C for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules and combine Items 1, 2, and 6A, B, and C for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. I'll also note that Item 7 has been withdrawn. So we'll take up the combined items, and then the only items remaining will be 3, 4, and 5. So Items 1 and 2 now come before us. May we have the resolutions on those items? Nancy Brown, who is Director of the Community Development Block Program.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Members of the Town Meeting. Resolution 1 and 2 is, as you had said, is going to be combined. There is a substitute resolution, Number 1, that resolution is, the substitute resolution is to correct a couple of typos, three typos. The first typo is in the second paragraph, in which the third word, I'm sorry, the, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth word, "N," there's a comma, that comma should be removed, and the fourth line in the second paragraph, there should be space between 2005 and December, and then in the next line, right after the number 126, the word "N" should be inserted. The first resolution is a resolution of the Board of Estim and Taxation, which is the appropriation resolution, and the Board of Estimate, as you will see in your notes, passed this at a 12-0-0. The second resolution is a resolution of the first selectman, in which you authorize, if you pass it, authorize the first selectman to apply for the grant. The amount of the grant at this time, we do not know the exact amount, but we expect it would be $1,115,000, more or less. I believe that the resolutions are far too long for me to read them in total, but that is the sum of those two resolutions.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the two resolutions? The substitute resolution on Item 1 and the resolution on Item 2 have been moved and seconded. Josh Brown, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, at what time do you open the public hearing?
Why don't we open the public hearing now? Public hearing is now open. If any member of the public desires to be heard on these items tonight, please let me know when we get to the discussion phase. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee met on Monday, the 18th, with 10 districts present and voting. Districts 2 and 9 were not attending. We have Ms. Brown with us to explain these items, as she indicated. The first, Item Number 1, is for appropriation of the funding, and Item 2 is the authorization of the first selectman to apply for and accept the grant monies. Ms. Brown reviewed the overall funding request. The anticipated funding level of approximately $1.1 million will be added to an annual repayment, loan repayment, that comes into the town of $38,000, plus the use of some contingency monies from the current year, to give the $1.2 million, which would cover the grant applications that we have before us in our package. Your Finance Committee inquired about the certain programs and process of selecting and recommending those programs. There is a new program this year from Bridgeport, which provides an outreach healthcare program to the area. With little discussion on this item, your Finance Committee voted 10 in favor, none opposed, none abstaining.
Thank you. Bob Richardson with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Health and Human Services Committee took up Items 1 and 2 together and was ably assisted by Ms. Nancy Brown, our Director of Community Development. The resolution in Item 1 appropriates funds to be expended under the calendar year 2005 Community Development Block Grant Proposed Action Plan. The total appropriation for 2005 will be $1,266,000, consisting of $1,115,000, more or less, as an entitlement or grant to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, approximately the same number as in calendar year '04, plus $150,000 in loan repayments and reprogrammed funds. After 15% administrative costs, $248,000 will be distributed among 14 Greenwich and Stamford not-for-profit organizations as, quote, "public service," unquote, grants for operating expenses. The balance, the bulk of the funds, $816,000, will be allocated among four agencies for building rehabilitation or building acquisition. The most significant one is the $500,000 grant to the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center to help the organization rebuild the interior of the Mayanus River Pump House. And the second most important one, a $250,000 grant to family centers for the purchase from Christchurch of the Gateway Preschool property off of West Putnam Avenue in Byram. The second resolution, as Ms. Brown mentioned, approves the action plan and enables the first selectman to implement the plan. Our committee was favorably impressed by this year's action plan and the five-year plan incorporated with it, and commends the Community Development Advisory Committee, most of whose members are members of this body, as well as two members of the BET, and we also commend the professional staff for the quality of the report. Our vote was 10 in favor, none opposed, none absent, two districts absent, 4 and 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took up this matter last Monday evening. Nancy Brown came to our committee to address the Items 1 and 2. She addressed the typographical errors that she pointed out here, and we passed the resolution as amended with those changes that she indicated here this evening. Mr. Brown and Mr. Richardson have covered the territory quite well on this. There was no discussion or problems with this resolution in our committee. Our vote was 11-0-0, with District 1 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Items 1 and 2. All right, we'll keep the public hearing open while we take up the remaining combined items. First of the substitute resolutions on Item 6? Sue Wallerstein?
Susan Wallerstein, Greenwich Public Schools. Substitute Resolution 6, Part 1, is to correct typographical error in the, one of the several accounts to which the funds are to be appropriated. Resolve that the sum of $524,176 BN is hereby appropriated as follows. $98,823 to account, and here is the typo account. It should be Z68002925965025109. And that's the only typographical or account error. And $425,000 to account Z68002925965025109. For Hamilton Avenue modular building acquisition and Hamilton Avenue modular hookup costs, said appropriation to come from the Reserve for Capital Nonrecurring Fund.
All right. Will a member please move the adoption of that substitute resolution? The resolution on what I will now call Item 6A has been moved and seconded since these three go together. We'll now take up the next one.
The second substitute resolution is the companion piece, as has been pointed out, one of three, and there were no typographical errors. In fact, this is the same text that was presented to committees last Monday night, but it is a substitute from the original RTM call. Resolve that the sum of $254,000 BN is hereby appropriated to be added to the following accounts. $10,000 to account A62051300 for Hamilton Avenue program needs. $124,000 to account A66052120, Hamilton Avenue school transportation, and $120,000 to account A64051300, relocation class for Hamilton Avenue students. Said appropriation to come from the contingency fund. And this, as is the first part, all relate to the relocation mid-year, hopefully, of students from the current Hamilton Avenue school to the modular facility at Western Middle School.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute Resolution 6B? The substitute resolution on Item 6B has been moved and seconded. Dr. Wallerstein. Are you going to present one more?
No, Mr. Mazza.
Oh, okay. Frank Mazza, who is Chair of the Hamilton Avenue Building Committee.
Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, I assume this will be C. It's resolve that the sum of $860,000 BN is hereby appropriated to be added to the following account. C68002925965025110 for Hamilton Avenue construction, engineering, and design. Said appropriation to come from the Reserve for Capital Nonrecurring Fund.
All right, I heard a different number, but could we just take a look at the account number, that second set of numbers? Did you say, is it 59560?
59650.
We have 560. Is that a change?[1702.47][1702.47](Laughter). 560. So what we have is correct. So it's 59560.
Yeah.
Okay. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute Resolution 6C? The substitute resolution on Item 6C has been moved and seconded. We will now hear the committee reports on these three items, beginning with Bob Brady, Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Members, guests. The Education Committee met on October 18 to consider the three substitute resolutions. All districts were represented. Board members Waters, Jambo, and Carey were present. Mr. Carey also represented the Hamilton Avenue School Building Committee. Mr. Louis Free of URS Consulting, the Board of Ed's Construction Consultant, was present, as were Doctors Leverett and Wallerstein from the Board of Education staff, who assisted us. Item 6 does two principal things. Excuse me. It adds $1,638,176 to the $2.4 million already appropriated for Hamilton Avenue school in the '04-'05 capital budget. Second, the three separate items together distribute the funds to the appropriate accounts as follows. 6A appropriates and adds $524,176 to the previously appropriated $2.4 million for temporary classrooms to be occupied by Hamilton Avenue students from January '05 through June '07 during the Hamilton Avenue students from January '05 through June '07 during the period of demolition and reconstruction of Hamilton Avenue School. Total for the temporaries is $2.9 million and change. This money will be used to purchase the modular classrooms and install them on the Western Middle School campus. It includes foundation and utility hookups. Six B appropriates $254,000 to Board of Education operating accounts to provide the $124,000 to cover incremental busing expenses, $120,000 to relocate equipment and supplies from the existing Hamilton Avenue School to the temporary facility in Janu-, in late December, actually, and $10,000 for other Hamilton Avenue program needs. The incremental busing component will also be appropriated in the '05 of six, and the '06, seven school budgets will be part of the budget, it will be part of the busing component of the education budget. Six C is an $860,000 appropriation asked for by the Hamilton Avenue School Building Committee to provide planning money for the committee to engage professionals and begin its work on the Hamilton Avenue School. Dr. Leverett noted that there was considerable community input from various interested parties and groups to the process by which the Board of Education arrived at its decision to first, keep the Hamilton Avenue student body together during the construction of the new school, to relocate it to a temporary facility rather than some other permanent facility in town, and to three, cite the facility, the temporary facility at Western Middle School. The temporary facility will consist of about 29,000 square feet of classrooms, administrative, assembly, and utility spaces. The structures are factory-assembled, including electrical and communications wiring and HVAC components installed. The Hamilton Avenue students will not be sharing space with the Western Middle School students. For example, food will be prepared at Western Middle School and carried over to Hamilton Avenue temporaries for consumption on, at the temporary facility. At the conclusion of the construction of Hamilton Avenue School, the units can be removed and sold. Foundations and other work, works then would be restored to their pre-temporary status. No estimate of the cost was made to do that restoration work, nor was there an estimate of the out-year value of the temporary units available. The Board emphasized that the RTM must adopt this resolution this month so that the work may be completed for student occupancy upon their return from Christmas holiday next January, permitting the release of the existing Hamilton Avenue School to the Building Committee. Postponement will result in delaying construction of the new Hamilton Avenue School and perhaps higher costs. The Education Committee considered all three subparts together and voted 12-0-0 to recommend that the RTM adopt these resolutions. Thank you.
And with the report of our Finance Committee, Josh Brown.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met on the eighteenth of October with ten districts present in voting. Two and nine were absent. We also had Dr. Wallerstein and Ed Gomo, the Town Administrator, helping us on this item. We covered much of the same ground that Mr. Brady's just described to you. The vote on each of these items, the three that were presented, were 10-0-0 in favor of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took this matter up last Monday evening. Mr. Kelly of the Hamilton School Building Committee was there, along with Doctors Susan Wallerstein. At the time of our vote, there was a discussion about why this was, the nature of the, of the acquisition, this was being changed, and the long and short of it was, we realized there was very little difference in the cost, but the many members of the Building Committee in the town were concerned about what might happen if the seller or the lessor did not receive certain favorable, tax-favorable treatment that they were looking for. It might provide the town with an obligation beyond what would appear at face value on the lease. So there was this agreement to buy the modular units as opposed to leasing them. There was very little controversy thereafter. We also were impressed by the need to move quickly on this. Our vote on this matter was 11-0-0, District One absent.
Thank you.
One other thing. At the time that we took up the vote, the BET had not yet passed on the approval because they were meeting at the same time we were meeting. So it was done based on the contingency that, that in fact they would pass this resolution. They did, and so that was how we came to the vote at that time.
Thank you. Discussion on item six. Josh Brown?
Mr. Moderator, just for clarity, the account number that we are voting for these three items is 59650? And that's different than what the B and T was just voting?
Well, is there someone who can enlighten us?
That is not correct.
Mr. Tessie, could you step forward, please? Peter Tessie, Chair of the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
Good evening. Just to confirm, the object number is 59560.
Thank you. Further discussion on item six. All right, the public hearing is still open on items one and two. Anyone care to address us on the Community Development Block Grant? Seeing no interested speakers, I will now close the public hearing and ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards, combined items one, two, six, A, B, and C, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, the next item will come before us. That is item number three. Al Kava, maybe you could tell us your new title, Al. I forget.
Al Kava, Director of Labor Relations. Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting and guests, good evening. I'll be reading a substitute resolution. The substitute resolution was presented and taken up by the committees last week. Just, I'll explain the difference. At the time, the call went to print, and we received some updated medical trend numbers. So we adjusted the cost analysis to reflect those revised trend numbers, and it lowered the amounts in each year of the contract. The substitute resolution resolve at the sum of $312,791 for the fiscal year 2004-05, the sum of $686,111 for the fiscal year 2005-06, the sum of $670,697 for the fiscal year 2006-07, and the sum of $656,142 for the fiscal year 2007-08, be and the same as hereby appropriated to carry out the terms of the negotiated four-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Greenwich and the Silver Shield Association of the Town of Greenwich. Further resolve that the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich hereby approve such provisions of the agreement, if any, which may be in conflict with any charter provisions, special act, ordinance, rule, or regulation of the Town of Greenwich with the meaning of Connecticut General Statute 7 hyphen 474. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on item three has been moved and seconded. We will begin our committee reports with Joan Caldwell, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. The Greenwich Police Department is staffed with a chief, two deputies, four captains, two lieutenants, and 152 other men and women who serve in various capacities within the department. This contract covers that 152 man force. We have one vacancy at the moment. Mr. Kava tells me that we have no difficulty filling vacancies. It was a concern that has been expressed or raised by several members of town meeting, and we wanted to assure you that we are able to find men and women who are interested in being in the Greenwich Police Department. Of the 151 employees currently on the police force, 73 are officers. Forty-one of them are at the top step. There are five steps in this contract. Two are very near the top step. Again, that was an answer to a question that some of you had. You have received a summary of the changes in the contract as well as detailed cost information. It is a four-year contract commencing last July 1st and going out fiscal year '08. It calls for a 3 percent salary increase in the first year, three and a quarter in the second, third, and fourth years, plus increments. Perhaps a better way to look at this would be to understand that to provide or to have the 152-man police force in place in fiscal nineteen, in 2004, cost the town $15,500, almost $600,000. For fiscal '05, which is the first year of the contract, it is going to cost us $15,500,000, almost $900,000. Now, some of the increase would have happened anyway, regardless of whether we approved the contract or not. They are just a cost of doing business. Those increases would come from new salaries because of increments for the men who still are on the steps and would automatically move up a step. It comes from increased pension costs that we have to pay into the program because of the changes in salary. It comes from the increase in insurance costs. They are all incorporated in the figure that I gave you, $15,500,000, almost $900,000. In the second year of the contract, that cost goes up to $16,500, and in the third year, $17,300. The wage increases that are given in this contract are in keeping with what we have offered to other employee groups in the town. It should be noted, however, that this is the first settlement by the towns' side, that is, those contracts negotiated by Mr. Kava for the first selectman, for the fiscal years '05, '06, and '07. That's important because it becomes a benchmark, and as we go into other collective bargaining agreements or negotiations, it kind of establishes a line where we want to be. The settlement is also in keeping with what is being given to other towns in Connecticut. There are two, there are two major factors that we would like to call your attention to in this contract. The first one is that all of the employees covered by the contract now will be coming under the new insurance program, the Point of Service Program, from the PPO. That will affect a savings or a reduction in the increase that the town is going to have to pay for insurance premiums. And it will mean that this will be the fourth employee unit in the town to come under that program. Our goal is to get all of the town employees into the program, since it will affect, as I said, a reduction in the amount of new insurance premiums or increased insurance premiums that the town has to pay each year. And as you know, increased insurance is a very, very costly item to everyone and to the town as well. Employees coming in to the POS program will have the option of remaining in the PPO if they want to, but they have to pay the difference. That is an opportunity for them, and it's a savings for us. We don't want to take the POS away from them if they prefer to be there. We just ask that they pick up the difference in the cost. The insurance also, the changes in the insurance program also give a two, it would replace a two-tiered drug program with a three-tiered drug program. Again, that's important because it gives the employees a better option for savings, and it is a savings to the town as well. The last thing that we want to call your attention to, or the second thing that I wanted to call your attention to, is that there are changes in the pension program, and it's one of the reasons that we have that second paragraph of the resolution is put into the call each time a contract comes before you. We are, if we approve this contract tonight, making a change in one of the rules and regulations of the town. So therefore, that language has to be in there. There have been, over the years, a number of firemen, policemen, who have wanted to remain in the town's employ even after they reach the age of eligibility for retirement. Those people have continued with increase in salary, but they cannot affect any change in their pension program or in their pension contributions and in their pension checks. The union wanted some adjustment of that. What they wanted was not acceptable to the town or not in the best interest of the town, and so the following was negotiated. We agreed that an officer who wanted to stay past the age of retirement could do so for a period of up to seven years. But each year, he must op, he must let us know he intends to stay one full year. If he does this, he has two ways to go. One is to freeze his, his pension benefit at exactly what it is in the year of his eligibility for retirement. It's the first year he's eligible. And then he would get, for every year that he continues after that, the increase in salary, and that would go according to, to the contract. It is presumed he would be at the top step, so he would get every, whatever the percentage increase the contract dictated. Plus, he would get an additional 5 percent, no, excuse me, an additional one-half of 1 percent in the calculation of his pension. Now, right now, police officers get 75 percent of their last year or their best 12 months of salary. We would add to that one-half of 1 percent for each of the seven years he, they continue to work for us. Or, they can freeze their pension at the, at the rate that it is the year they become eligible, and the town would contribute nothing, they would earn nothing more toward that pension, but the town would increase or give them 8 percent of their year's salary for each of the years that they work for the town, and they would contribute 2 percent of that. The combined 10 percent would be deposited to a 401A, which is very much like a 401K. You can't get at it until you reach 65. It's another kind of pension program. In going over this and looking at it carefully, we were concerned, the committee was concerned, about the long-term effects such a change to our pension program might have for the police officers. We well remember what appeared to be a cheap giveaway when we said we would give them 75 percent of health insurance, and that was to the firemen back in 1986, when no one had any idea that insurance costs would go through the roof as they are today. So with that in mind, the committee was very hesitant to approve this, to even recommend it, without looking long-term. We asked Mr. Kava if he would pull out of his database the actual salaries of men who are eligible for retirement this year, and we looked at them. We took an officer who is eligible for retirement this year, with his, his, his 75 percent pension and 75 percent of his healthcare being paid by the town his first year of retirement, he would earn or get from the town $61,000. Now, he has left us with a vacancy in the department, so we must hire someone else to fill that vacancy. We calculated the cost of the replacement at an entrance level or fairly close to it, and we calculated it on the basis that the first 10 months that this individual is in the employ of the town, he is not really here. He's in training. So the cost to the town for that person is $51,000. Plus, we must pay his health insurance, which is another $19,000. The total for that new person is $71,000. Combine the two, 61 for the man who's left and 60, and 71 for the employee, the new employee coming in, and you have a total cost to the town of $132,000 for every retirement replacement we have. Now, compare that, which is what we did, with the following scenario. The police officer is eligible for retirement but opts to stay with the town. He opts to stay with the town, but he wants to do it by earning one-half of 1 percent each year for the number of years he's with us on his pension. His salary, we calculate, at $62,000. He's making more than he was last year. His health His health insurance is $19,700. The cost to us for keeping him in place is $81,000, 81, almost 82. If you subtract the 82 from the 132 it would cost us if he retired, there is a savings to the town. And if you go across the board, which we did, we went out five years, the savings mounts up, and in total, it looks like something like $253,000. In scenario number two, the police officer opts to retire, but he doesn't want the extra half of percent calculated into his 75% of salary for his retirement check. He wants to have us put in 8% of his new salary, and he'll put in 2% into that 401A. The cost there is, again, $62,000 in salary, $19,000 for his health insurance, and for his retirement, almost $5,000. The total, $86,700. It's still a savings from 132, and if you run it out five years, the savings looks to be about $255,000. We felt that whether a patrolman or an officer chose to resign to workforce only one year beyond his eligible retirement date or five years, it was a good situation for the town and obviously a good situation for the officer because he wouldn't do it. He isn't forced to do it. They do it for reasons that we can't explain, but they do do it because we do have men now on the police force who are eligible for retirement. We were satisfied that this took care of our number-one concern. The Labor Contracts Committee recommended or recommends that you approve this contract by a vote of five in favor and none opposed. We did have one alternate president who was not eligible to vote, but had he been, he said he would have voted affirmatively. Now, one other thing I'd like to bring to your attention, and that is the resolution that is before you. It has been brought to our attention that the resolution asks not only for an appropriation for the past year, but asks for an appropriation for the coming fiscal year, which has yet to be voted on by the town meeting, and for the two succeeding years, which is rather unusual. Normally, this body does not appropriate money in advance. And when it was brought to our attention, I have to say that I was surprised too in thinking about it. I don't know, truthfully, whether it was a mistake in the resolution or whether there was something way back that caused a succession of controllers, a succession of town attorneys to say that this was the way to do it. But we're going to look at it and find out and fix it between now and the next contract coming through. The one thing I can tell you is that if it's a mistake, it's a mistake that's been in place since 1988, because I did check the calls that far back.
Well, I think it's fair to say, Mr. Wetmore, that we're not appropriating for future years despite the language. Now, I know Mr. Tuttle is going to say, this is the kind of report he would like handouts on, or at least a PowerPoint presentation. Josh Brown with our Finance Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, we had 10 districts present voting on Monday, the 18th. We also had Al Cava and also Joan Caldwell to assist us. Mr. Cava had handed out the substitute resolution and indicated a reduction or lowering of healthcare costs were factored into the projected appropriation and effect of the contract for the four-year term. We went over much of the same material that Joan has already gone over, so I won't need to repeat it all. We found that this contract appears to be in the best interest of the town and of the employees that are represented, and on the item voted 10 in favor, none opposed, none abstaining.
Thank you. Mary Ferry, Vice Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Good evening. We met last Tuesday with Al Cava, with 10 districts present. We discussed all the things that you've already heard about, including the appropriation into the next few years. We voted 10-0-0, and Districts 4 and 9 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 3.
Mr. Buttell, District 8. Yes, I just want to make sure we note in the minutes the question of appropriations for future years. I'm making the point that we, we're not really appropriating money for future years, but maybe we are. We can indicate we're going to get an answer to the question, I want to make sure the minutes were like that. Kind of, if they're turning, they can focus and get to the question.
Okay. Further discussion on Item 3? Yes, sir? Mr. Edwards, I'm going to ask that you step forward, please. If, if, excuse me, if any, no, no, if any speaker intends to speak, I'll ask that you come forward and I will recognize you, but for our viewing audience as well as those present.
Mr. Moderator, Nick Edwards, District 8. A question came up in the district of the 75%. Is that on a base salary or is that on, as she said, best accumulated salary with overtime? We were led to believe it was a base salary.
We were told in our district it did not include overtime. And Ms. Caldwell, you're confirming that? Yes. Does not include overtime. Further discussion on Item 3? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 3, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the voting on the combined items. Those were Items 1 and 2, the Community Development Block Grant, and Items 6, A, B, and C relating to the Hamilton Avenue relocation to Western Middle School. Those in favor, 160; opposed, 0; abstaining, 3. The combined items have carried. Item 4 now comes before us. Commissioner of Public Works, Marcos Madrid.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item Number 4, resolved that the sum of $197,000 be in the same as hereby appropriated to the added to the Public Works general fund account number as it appears in the call. If I may, Mr. Moderator, just to make one correction to the Explanos. On Page 2, or sorry, on Item Number 2, 3, and 5, where it reads 21,000 cubic yards, those should read 780 cubic yards. We made this correction at the committees, but we wanted to just make sure that it was, that everyone understood that tonight.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 4 has been moved and seconded. Bob Kevie, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
We met on Monday night on Item 4. 11 districts were present and voting, and District 10 was absent. The item was supported by the Commissioner, Marcos Madrid. The only item referred to our committee was Item 4, which is nominally $197,000 to remove two underground fuel storage tanks located at the North Street Maintenance Shed. These tanks are currently out of service and cannot be abandoned in place. Most of the expenses for this project, however, are related to the remediation of MTBE soil contamination. A very small portion is related to the tank removal. There are two 2,000-gallon tanks underground. The committee voted 11-0-0 in favor, with District 10 absent. As the Commissioner noted, there were three references in the explanatory notes for Item 4 of 21,000 cubic yards of soil, which is off by a factor of 27 from what should have read 780 cubic yards, and I guess that's the conversion from cubic feet to cubic The 780 cubic yards of contaminated soil was hopefully a cautious estimate of the MTBE contamination. The committee urges the BET to closely monitor a possible reduction of actual project remediation requirements and a consequent return of appropriated funds.
Thank you. Josh Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met again with 10 districts present voting. Districts 2 and 9 were absent. We had Alan Minelli from DPW helping us and Dr. Sue Wallerstein from the Education Administration. It's requesting appropriation for the removal of the two large underground fuel tanks at the North Street Board of Education Storage Facility. Much of it was covered by Mr. Kevie in his report. Mr. Minelli did indicate that there appears to have been MTBE in the test wells that were dug around the existing in-ground tanks, and therefore, that's caused the urgency to have those tanks now removed. We also got into the discussion of why the tanks were still in the ground, knowing that other town-owned tanks in other facilities had been removed in the late '90s, and indicated that this was a Board of Ed property and not as part of the town tank removal process. But they're working more closely together, and we would encourage that the Board of Ed and the town can continue finding ways to work together and not let oversights like this exist. Had we taken the tanks out, we might not be needing to do it at this state. Your Finance Committee inquired about the scope of the work. We talked about the 21,000 cubic yards versus the 780 cubic yards, difference between feats and feet and yards. We also inquired about this appropriation being worst case. It's believable that this will cover the costs that would be expected, you know, to be almost a worst case. Certainly, the worst case would be if there was actually infiltration into the water system, and Mr. Minelli was feeling that we should be able to get the testing and the tanks removed and ground remediated properly. He also indicated that they're using a special consultant that will help test the digging process, during the digging process, to ensure that we don't take more earth out of the ground than otherwise needs to be, and we're going to be being able to reclaim the good ground, the good earth, as it were. This item cannot wait. These tanks do need to be removed. Our vote on this item was 10 in favor, none opposed, and none abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 4? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 4, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item Number 5 now comes before us. Christine Clark, Director of Nathaniel Witherell, with that resolution.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. Resolved that the sum of $100,000 be in the same as hereby appropriated from contingency to account, and there's a correction on the account number, should read A450-514-90 for consulting services to be provided to the Nathaniel Witherell Board.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 5 has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met on the 18th with 10 districts. 2 and 9 were absent. We all had Christine Clark, the Director of the Nathaniel Witherell, and a number of board members, Mr. Augustine, the fiscal officer, and Bob Richardson, the Chairman of the Special Committee, contributing to our discussions. This item is requesting funds to perform the fundraising feasibility study that we had asked as part of our sense of the meeting resolution and certain business planning assistance to support that. Ms. Clark reviewed the item, its purpose and scope. A more specialized firm is expected to be engaged to perform this work, not HDS. The report is expected to be completed and presented to the RTM for the March meeting. That's current plans. Other work will be going on simultaneously to evaluate and look at the certificate of need and the commitments that have been made as part of that that need to be reached during the summer of this coming year. We noted that Mr. Richardson had not yet seen the scope of the work, and as the Chairman of the Special Committee would have thought that certainly the good knowledge of the Special Committee would be helpful to ensure that the scope of work meets the essence of what the sense of the meeting was. We would encourage that through you, Mr. Moderator, that the Special Committee continue its support and guidance for the open items that were called for in the sense of the meeting resolution. On the item, we voted 10 in favor, none opposed, none abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Richardson with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, we're pleased to have Ms. Clark, as well as Ray Augustine, the Finance Director of Nathaniel Witherell, join us for discussion of this item. This is the first piece of legislative business in the process of implementing the sense of the meeting resolution on the Nathaniel Witherell, which was adopted by this body at our last meeting on September 20th. While the item consists of a single appropriation of $100,000, two separate activities are to be funded. The first is a fundraising feasibility study to determine how much in the way of charitable contributions may be raised for Nathaniel Witherell as a not-for-profit entity pursuant to Condition Precedent 4 in the sense of the meeting resolution. We understand that the Board also contemplates a study of how much can be raised for Nathaniel Witherell as a town department. The second activity to be funded is engaging a consulting CPA firm to assist the Board on regulatory and other issues in the preparation of a business plan. The business plan is called for in Condition Precedent 5 of the sense of the meeting resolution. This activity would be funded by the balance not used for the fundraising feasibility study. The committee recognized that conducting a bifurcated feasibility study may not, in fact, be practicable. It also recognized that the Special Committee did not recommend retention of consultants to assist in preparation of a business plan. After some discussion, it was consensus on giving the Board some leeway, some might say rope, and our vote was 10 in favor, none opposed, no abstentions, and 2 absent, Districts 2 and, 4 and 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 5? Will the district chairs please mark, yes, Mr. Von Keiseling, District 8? Hold up. Mr. Von Keiseling, please come forward.
Mr. Moderator, a point of information. During the discussion on this item, there was a lot of comment made on what was intended by the Moderator's Special Committee on Nathaniel Witherell, what wasn't, and such, back and forth. As a result of that, the question raised, was raised in our, some of the committees and in our district as to the status of the Special Committee on, the Moderator's Special Committee. Is that committee still in existence, or has it fulfilled its duty? If it's to continue, what is its purpose? If you, please could answer us. Thank you.
Okay. And I will answer in summary. The committee will continue. I will issue a revised charge to them to govern their continuing work. Further discussion on Item 5? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 5, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on Item 3, which was the police contract. Those in favor, 165; opposed, 0; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. As that is the, as Item 5 is the last item to come before us tonight, we will await the voting. We are still waiting for all the votes on Item 4. And we need the votes on Item 5. Now, I am informed by Carol Ducrey and Claire Simonelli that there is a wonderful group that has signed up. Do not miss the Harvest Buffet on Wednesday, November 17th, at the Old Greenwich Civic Center, dancing, oh goodness, catering by garden- Catering by Garden Catering. Yes, Mr. Boutell? Do you have some kind of dance we could do, perhaps, to cheer on the Cardinals? No? By the way, if you haven't signed up, Carol Ducrey is heading out to the back, so if you could give her your check, if you are interested in attending and haven't signed We have the results of the vote on item number four, which was for the underground storage tanks. Those in favor, one fifty-six; opposed, seven; abstaining, zero. That item has carried. dollars for Nathaniel Witherell. Those in favor, one fifty; opposed, ten; abstaining, three. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Curtis, again, for broadcasting the meeting for us, and everyone have a safe trip home.